Can't tell the players without a program anymore. Different seat every time.
Okay, it is 2:30. I will call the April 6, 2020 Sillina City Commission to order. First of all, I would ask staff if the proper Kansas Open Meeting Act notice has been distributed.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will do roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
I believe she's on the phone and is unmuted. Commissioner Hodges, can you hear us?
Here with us, we're working out difficult, technical difficulties again.
I just unmuted the conference phones and now maybe Commissioner Hodges can hear us.
Okay.
And sounds like we need to get the website up and then we'll pick up where we left off.
Here.
Commissioner Orion. Here, okay, thank you.
Can we get the volume up for Commissioner Hodges any? She kind of faint.
Commissioner Hodges, could you do a test for us?
It's getting better, yes.
Okay, I think we have the volume maxed out.
Please bear with us, we're waiting to see if we're up and going on all devices. I thought they had it up and running.
Oh, that's not good.
I'm gonna do the money.
Mr. Mayor, you want water?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I need to run through some preliminary housekeeping, just to confirm our platforms are working and provide the listeners at home an explanation of how this will work. So, we have Scott Gardner in another room monitoring multiple platforms at the same time. Scott, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
And can you confirm that the Sillina Media Connection video feed is correct?
Yes, it is.
And the website, their online website?
Online website is running.
And YouTube Live?
YouTube Live is running.
All right, thank you. I'm going to mute you, Scott. And then, for the listeners at home, we posted this information along with the agenda and the numbers haven't changed, but I'll announce it again. We are using a conference bridge that allows citizens to call in and listen to the meeting on the phone. It also allows the opportunity for public comment. As a moderator, I'm able to see all the callers that have called in, either by their name or their phone number, just depending on how they show up on the screen. So, to call into the, to participate, the number is 785-621-0800. You'll be asked for a participant ID number, that is 782-956. You'll also be asked to announce yourself, followed by the pound sign. And you can either just push the pound sign without announcing yourself, or go ahead and announce yourself. I have the settings set so that you won't interrupt the conversation with an announcement. But you do need to go through that third step before you'll be joined into the call and be able to hear and be able to be called upon. And then, as we ask for public comment, we'll remind people that to indicate that they wish to speak, they need to press star nine. I think we've had some confusion about pound versus star. It needs to be star nine. That will then put an icon on my screen indicating an individual caller wishes to speak. It'll give me the opportunity to call on them, unmute their line, and allow them to address the city commission. So, I'll repeat that one more time. The call-in number is 785-621-0800. The participant ID number is 782-956, followed by the pound sign. You'll be prompted to announce yourself. You can do so if you choose, or you can skip that, but in either case, you need to finish with a pound sign. At that point, you will then be entered into the call. We do have executive session scheduled for today in a couple of instances. We've done that before, we'll do it in the same format. We will stay in this room. Because of social distancing, we aren't able to adjourn to a side room. The sound will be turned off on the conference call. The conference call will still remain live, everyone can stay on the call. YouTube Live will be muted, and we will keep it live, but it will be taken out of the room so that there's no video or audio feed during the executive session. Sillina Media Connection will do their typical screen that they do for executive session without sound. That'll give us the opportunity to adjourn in executive session when we return. It'll take a bit, but we'll fire all those technologies back up. The callers, the call will be unmuted, those callers will be able to hear the rest of the meeting. YouTube Live will be unmuted, and Sillina Media Connection will go back online. So with that, I have one other housekeeping item, and I may be jumping ahead of the mayor just a bit, but we have a public hearing on the agenda today that was advertised, I believe, prior to the COVID-19 issues arising. And so it was advertised for a specified time of 4:00 p.m. We started meeting at 2:30 in place of the study session. So in the interest of anyone that wants to participate on that item, we'll need to amend the agenda to set it for 4:00 p.m. or later, and then we can pick that item up at that time. So with that, I think that's all the housekeeping items I have for you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I believe we're gonna jump back and we're gonna, those who are able, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, if you could, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, we have no awards and proclamations today. Before we get started on Citizens Forum, I would like to address the public again and thank those that are currently following the governor's request and also those of the City of Sillina in social distancing. I think we're doing a nice job. I did read an article today where they believe Kansas is ahead of where they were projected to be. It is with sadness that we had our first death yesterday because of COVID-19, and our thoughts and prayers are with that family. And we hope that that would be the last one that we would have in this county of Saline. So, with that, we will open the phones up for Citizens Forum. This is a chance for individuals to comment on something that is not on the current agenda, and please limit your comments to five minutes. So, Mike, do we have anyone?
I'm sorry. I'll make one last call for anyone that wishes to speak, they need to press star nine. I don't see anyone at this time.
Okay. With that, with Mike's prior announcement, we are going to jump over 5.1, that for the public hearing, and we will move to item six.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 25, 2020. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of March 30, 2020. And item 6.3, resolution number 20-7821, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement to lengthen the tolling period in the consent decree which relates to the former Schilling Air Force Base site.
Are there any items that a commissioner would like to have removed from the consent agenda? If not, I would accept a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, that passes 5-0. That leads us to Administration, 7.1.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Do we still need to identify ourselves?
Yes, that's a good point.
I didn't know whether all was visual or not.
For those that are just on the phone and not also watching video, it would be useful to announce ourselves after, before each comment.
It's all right.
Item 7.1, discussion of impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on the revenues of the City of Sillina.
If I may, I'll introduce this item a little bit. Mike Scragg, City Manager. You may recall that when I interviewed for the position, I told you financial reporting and budgeting and graphics and analysis were a priority for me. I didn't anticipate this. We have put forth and continue to put forth quite a bit of effort as it relates to financial analysis. I definitely want to give credit to Debbie Pack and Tara Sauber, the Finance Director and Deputy Finance Director respectively, for all the work they've done. Between the three of us, we, I think, put forth a lot of effort, a lot of analysis. I appreciate how ready Debbie and Tara are with the details as well as the analysis. By email and by staff report, shared with you that this forecasting is incredibly uncertain and not something that there's a model out there for. And I've used the term orders of magnitude a few times. And I guess my point there is, we tried to go look at available publications, which is pretty time-sensitive given how quickly this is moving, to inform our decisions or our assumptions about revenue projections. But my point with orders of magnitude is, I'm not professing that we think we have any one of those dialed in to any absolute level of certainty. Our intention today is to walk you in considerable detail through the numbers, so you have a sense of kind of the significance that we've given to our revenue projections. And then you can see the total impact that that creates on our fund, our fund revenue. And then you might have a sense of whether you think we're in the right ballpark in terms of magnitude, or whether we're overly conservative or not conservative enough. The other thing I would tell you is, you know, we, in the presentation, touched on the timing of when data becomes available. And as you well know, sales tax revenue comes to us two months after the sale happens. So, we have a significant lag in one of our biggest revenue sources. We've called that out as part of the presentation. So, as we look at kind of next steps for the budget process, I think getting on top of expenditure reductions and revenue forecasting early is important. We definitely need to stay on top of the data as we can. I think we're gonna have to review that and adapt. Everything that we've prepared does not assume that we're tapping into reserves, in part because that gives us a little bit of latitude if our projections are understated, or if the impacts of COVID-19 are greater than we might have assumed. That might give us a little bit of time to see the sales tax numbers, see the response to the health issues in terms of social distancing, stay-at-home orders, whether they're extended or reinstituted, those type of impacts. And then, we've also, with the exception of part-time at the moment, not addressed personnel. But I think there's a handful of things on a personnel basis that we're looking at and merit additional consideration, whether that's furloughs and layoffs temporarily, or depending on the impacts of this, we may need to take a hard look at reorganization to get long-term budget measures in effect. So, with that, Debbie's got a ton of information that we pulled together, and I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you, Debbie Pack, Director of Revenue. Good afternoon. As Mike said, we have a lot of information, and believe it or not, it's only been two weeks since the first time I sat here and we started talking about this. Back on March 23, we brought you some general information about the revenue sources that are affected in the general fund. And we talked about some of the expenditures that we were looking at. Last week, we looked at some projects in depth. And this week, what we're really looking at is the revenue side. So we kind of touched on some of the expenditures. We really wanted to dig deep into the revenues and how we could start projecting those numbers. Because there's no clear models or past history to help us with this type of situation, staff, especially Tara Sauber, our Deputy Director, has created an adaptable model that will allow us to change percentages as we get that information. It was a lot of work on her, from her perspective and from her side. And it's gonna be really useful to us as we do start getting data and we start getting information that we can start adjusting what those numbers look like. It's, we'll, we can really go into this model and change those numbers, and we'll project those numbers, our revenues for us. So it was, it was a lot of work on her side, but I think it's gonna be very valuable to us as we go through this process. As I mentioned today, we're really gonna look at revenues. Mike did mention that there is some time lag between the information that we can get. And as we can look at that, basically daily, we're getting numbers on cases. We're getting numbers on cases and deaths and things like that. That's about the information that we're getting daily, other than everybody's different assumptions about what's going on, so it's really difficult to try to absorb all that. We can get unemployment claims on a weekly basis, so that's helpful. It tells us kind of where the City of Sillina is going as far as unemployment, in general, where those numbers are going, and kind of gives us an idea of what might, those might affect. We get franchise fees from gas, electric, and telephone for the prior month from our, our gas, electric, and telephone franchise fees. We get those monthly. And as Mike mentioned, we also get sales tax data monthly, but that's from two months ago. So it's, we really have a lag time in the information that we get. We do have, and you'll see in some of the slides that we present a little later, very detailed information on sales tax. We can't, we do get information down to the retailer level, but there's a lot of it, so that we could look at that and we could start looking at, as we see businesses that are possibly closing, or, you know, are being affected by this, we could actually go down to that level and see what, what that real effect is on us. At the end of May, we'll get our, our second half property tax collection, so we'll kind of know where our property taxes are for this year. The real effect, I believe, will come in December when we get, when we start paying our 2020 property taxes, because most of this tax has already been collected through escrows. June 15, we'll get our assessed valuations. Those are based on property values at January 1, so I wouldn't anticipate that this pandemic is gonna affect those greatly, but we don't really know what those are yet, so we're still waiting for that information. Transit guest tax, we get on a quarterly basis from the prior quarter. We also get franchise fees from cable, wireless, and video on a quarterly basis. So as you can see, that information is not real time, so that makes it all the more difficult for any of us to kind of figure out what this is doing to our financials. So as we start getting this information, we'll start bringing that back to you, but we do have to request a little bit of patience in the information that we actually can get. Something that we also wanted to explain on the sales tax was, every retailer files differently. It depends on how much their liability was for the prior year. So some, some retailers, they don't, they only file annually, some file quarterly, monthly, or accelerated, which is bimonthly. So our bigger ones are filing more often, but some of our smaller ones may not even file quarterly. So we won't know whether they're in trouble or whether they're, what their numbers look like for several months. So that's just something else to keep in mind. This was a graph that I thought was fairly interesting. As you know, China started kind of with the pandemic, and this is kind of shows where they've gone since January of 2020. And it shows that their, their cases, this is their confirmed cases as of March. It's kind of leveling out at this point, although every day, like you said in the news, you hear something else, so we don't know if this, this kind of leveling off is gonna hold or not, but we, hopefully, they've started to kind of reintroduce some of this, the people going out and things like that. So we'll be able to see what that kind of does on the cases. Another thing we really wanted to talk about was kind of a background of what's been happening, what's affecting, what's gonna happen to us, and kind of give us some information on what this pandemic is doing to us. So far, we have a state executive order that requires a stay-at-home from March 30 to April 19. We have a county stay-at-home order that runs from March 30 to April 29, which obviously is gonna affect our sales for, for the entire month of April. We have a possibility of cyclical stay-at-home orders, which we, scientists are saying we could have them, we could go out of them, we could go back in them. There's a lot of unknowns at this time. Those are just things that we're trying to keep in our mind as we look at these financials and what's gonna happen. We know there's a possibility of herd immunity, treatments, and vaccines. We know those are probably a long time. We don't know when those will be coming. We know there'll probably be social distancing cycles. We know there'll be an unemployment peak at some time. We don't know when that's coming. There's lingering stay-at-home orders, lingering mass gathering limits. You don't realize what those mass gathering limits have, effect you had, that have on the society, but they do have a great, a lot of effect on a lot of things that we do, because we have park activities, we have sports activities, we have a lot of those things that we can no longer do because they, there are more than 10 people are involved. We don't know what the lingering unemployment's gonna look like. We don't know what changes to people's discretionary spending is gonna be. What is this gonna, how's this gonna affect how people decide what to spend their money on, or what they have to spend money on? We know it's had a huge effect on travel and dining. We don't know what, what that long-term effect is gonna be on people's patterns. The longer we stay in, at-home orders, you know, it's just unknown at this time. Couple of the graphs that I brought up on this one, the top one is the foot traffic. I thought that was really interesting, the foot traffic at different locations. And you can see how when those stay-at-home orders went into effect in mid-March, those foot traffic numbers started dropping significantly. That's a good sign. The bottom graphic is fairly interesting. This is the Imperial College of London, and this is what their predictions on ICU visits. So as we peak, since we've been staying at home, and we kind of relax on those stay-at-home orders, they think that'll reduce, then they think we'll see a peak again, and then they think that, that we'll have to have some more, some more restrictions. And it's just gonna be a cycle of those, that as we go through and people get immune, or we get vaccines to this virus. This is a graphic that comes from the Moody's Outlook, and it's just, it's showing retail operating income performance that they're expecting in 2020. Now, this was early, so this was March 24, so we have a week and a half in our back pocket now, so this probably has changed significantly. But they are showing a reduction in sales growth and in operating income growth for most levels of retail. The unemployment data that we're getting, as I said, we can get this on a weekly basis, it's reported out every Thursday. In February, this is just to put it in perspective, in February of 2020, our unemployment rate was 3.5%. Our weekly claims now are 3.2 million. There's several sources here, legitimate sources, that have different varying ideas of where this is gonna go. Some expect the peak to be at 15% later this year, some believe that'll be 32%, and some believe it's only gonna be 8.5%. But the data that we are getting is from Kansas Department of Labor. They've had a 32, 3200% increase in claims compared to early March, and that's initial claims. The pre-COVID-19 average was about 1,800. The weekend in March 21 was almost 24,000. The weekend in March 28 was 55,000. Now, there are some noted benefits that have come through. The waiting period has been waived on unemployment. You used to have to wait a week before you could collect unemployment. And you used to have to actively seek work in order to qualify for unemployment. That requirement has been waived also. There is a federal supplement in place of an extra $600 a week. And the federal government has, has extended the time you can collect unemployment to, by 13 weeks to 39 weeks. And I thought this was an interesting graphic of unemployment claims going through 2019. And as you can see, we were going along in the under 500,000, all of a sudden it peaks to millions. So that's a pretty shocking graphic to see really what's happening to all those people that have either been laid off, they either have lower hours, their income's been reduced. Not everybody that's collecting unemployment is truly unemployed, they're just underemployed from where they were prior to this happening.
As a point, as a point of reference, if you go to the next highest peak, that's the 2008 recession. So, as a relative comparison of the two.
Mayor Hoppick here. Debbie, do we have any idea of where Saline County's unemployment rate is in Kansas compared to the, the national? I didn't know. You said you get updated numbers, I didn't know if you got it to that level.
I don't have it for Saline County. I do, I don't know if I have it later on in the slide. I do have some information from prior to COVID-19. I don't have it for now, but I could certainly look at it.
I was just curious if there was a way to monitor how
We can.
we were doing to national numbers, or even state numbers, that we could project what type of
Right, to see how we're responding as opposed to others. I'm not sure if that information is as readily available, but it is available. Then, something that's really important to us as we start looking at this is what the local impact, the impact to the local economy is gonna, gonna be doing to us. So we took a look at what our top employers, who our top employers were. We were trying to get a handle on how many of those employers, employers were small employers, because we, we hope, we think that that's probably gonna be the ones that are affected. And then kind of how, how do we look at these numbers and try to figure out what, what effect that's gonna have on our economy? So from, the Chamber of Commerce numbers from 2018 show that our top 10 are the Health Center, Schwan's, the School District, Great Plains, Exide, City of Sillina, the Rev Group, which was the old El Dorado, Sillina Vortex, Walmart, and Phillips Lighting. And we believe all of those, even the School District, while it's not fully operational, they're still working. We believe all of those are essential services for us, so, and that's good from our perspective, that our top 10 major employers are still essential services. The numbers that we got for the, the small ones are, they were from a source that we really weren't sure how accurate it was, but we, we thought it was important that we should at least look. So we can see that we have a lot of businesses that are under 50 people even, just so that we can start looking at those numbers and trying to figure those things out. So some of the things that we're gonna try to take a look at on this is how this, how this is affecting the health and recovery in these industries. Are there gonna be reductions in discretionary, discretionary spending from these employers? What are gonna be their supply chain issues? If, if there's small businesses that are closing down around the country or shut down, are our suppliers, our businesses gonna be able to get the, the materials that they need? Will these employers be able to absorb any of that unemployment? We know that they struggle to hire people, so we wanna look to see if any of that absorption can be made through these employers. We believe our franchise fees for most of these employers will stay fairly level, because they are still open, they're essential services. The other thing we have to look at that affects these are multiple closures or stay-at-home orders. The businesses that were The businesses that we're really concerned about, obviously, are entertainment, travel, and lodging, because those are going to be affected significantly because of the stay-at-home orders. And we're not sure how slow or how fast they're going to be able to recover from that and how people are going to respond.
Commissioner Davis, one question. On that smaller list off to the right, at the bottom, it said there were 18. Is that, are those like multinational corporations?
That's why we weren't sure whether that information was accurate. That was the source we got it from, but I don't know. That's got to be my honest answer. That was data that I found from that resource.
The other thing I would tell you is I ran a quick calculation of, you know, each, just taking the average of one to four employees, every one of those categories, times the number of businesses, and it far exceeds our population. And I think it far exceeds our poll of the region as well. So I don't know how accurate those numbers are. I don't know a whole lot about that source, but I think if nothing else, it probably provides you some sense of the distribution of large employers to small employers as we think about how it's going to impact small employers.
Well, we have some knockout entrepreneurs who have five businesses each.
Well, and we're trying to get this information. So if anybody knows of a source that we can get this information, please let us know because we're trying to figure out without going to a sales tax table that lists every retailer in the city, which does, not every company pays sales tax, so we wouldn't even gather them there. So we were struggling to find a resource to get this information. So hopefully the census will come out. I don't know if it'll give us any information or not. So the next thing we wanted to do is kind of look at, we know the last downturn was in 2008 when we had the Great Recession, so we wanted to put together some numbers about what happened then to some of our major interest rates, what happened to delinquency rates, just to gather some information. So we can see that throughout that time, we did have some, in 2009 and 10, we had a decline in sales tax by up to 4.9%. We had a decline in property tax of up to 6%. We had a little bit of decline in other taxes, which would be our franchise fees and our liquor tax. But we also saw that our assessed valuations went down a little bit, but then started very quickly coming back up. Our delinquency rates went down, but started coming, went up, but then started coming back down fairly quickly. So those are things that I think we need to keep an eye on, just to make sure, to see how those are kind of trending. The other thing we looked at was motor vehicle tax, and while some of the data here looks like it, based on timing or posting, it was kind of out of whack in '09, '10, and '11. But for the most part, those numbers have stayed pretty steady or increased over the last five, 10 years. The other thing we want to look at is, what I thought was interesting is to look at the response to all this with mill levies and things like that, how they went up after this, and that's to be expected at a time like that.
I would make a comment about the motor vehicle tax. There was one year, and it looks like this might be the year where the final distribution from the county, they had a practice of doing a distribution to us like December 30th, and then that swap switched back and forth, and it was enough to throw the numbers off. You had to be really careful for a number of years doing projections based on that because, as Debbie says, it was a timing issue and not necessarily a change in the tax levels.
Right.
And as you look, as you see those anomalies, what we've done, just in our mental analysis, is to kind of average that out over the two- or three-year period, and then it starts to make sense. It doesn't seem to fluctuate so broadly.
There was also a point, and maybe you remember when it was, where they changed the basis of valuation for vehicles, but that may precede 2007.
I don't recall when that was, but that may have an effect on it. And we also know from the property tax collection that the number that looks like it went up in 2009, there was a significant push to have delinquent tax collections, and so that created a significant influx of delinquent taxes for that particular year. So as we see these, we try to dig into them, kind of figure out what's happening so we can adjust our projections as we need to.
Commissioner Ryan here. Is the average mill rate list, is that, that's more than Salina? Is that the county and the school district?
That is the, it's very confusing, but for motor vehicle, the way that motor vehicle is taxed is based on an average county rate from two years ago. So that is a rate that's the average for all cities and jurisdictions within the county. For a period of time, that was two years ago. So for 2020, we're looking at, they're using the rate that was milled in 2018, and they average every jurisdiction in there. So they take Salina, New Cambria, Assaria, and they average, put those into one average so that you're paying the same rate. Everybody in the county is paying the same rate on a vehicle.
Yeah, okay.
So we wanted, just to go back and touch, we've looked at this graphic several times, but it kind of prefaces what we're going to look at in detail in here. 31% of our revenues from 2019 came from sales tax, and this is in the general fund. 22% came from property tax, 14% came from franchise fees. So the first, so the highest group and the first group that we started to take a look at was sales tax. Sales tax is 30% of our budget, which is a little over $13 million. The concerns we have to look at are, are people going to decrease their spending? Are there going to be restrictions on restaurants and retailers, closures due to the stay-at-home orders? Are there going to be long-term closures? Will the unemployment rate have an effect on people's spending? And we always have to look at the delay in sales and use tax receipts. We won't quite know what those closures and delinquencies even from those businesses will be until we get it two months later. And it could possibly change the filing frequency of some of our businesses if their liability goes beyond one of those levels that require them to file either annually or quarterly or monthly. I did put a little table on here, just so you can get an understanding of when the sale happens and when we get the money. So for the stay-at-home order, which is typically, which is truly April for us, it went into effect March 30th, we won't see those numbers until June, the end of June. So it's really going to be July almost before we see those numbers, and we'll be looking at those as soon as we get them to see exactly where they're going. Sales and use tax revenue, so what we did, as I said, we have a lot of information that we get from the state on the sales tax. So it's broken down by industries, and then those industries are broken down even further. This graphic shows you that 62% of our sales tax comes from retail trade. Another 3% comes from accommodations. 10% comes from food services, 6% from utilities, 4% from information, 4% from wholesale trade, and 11% from all others. So as you can see, a big chunk of our sales tax are coming from those retailers that could or couldn't be affected at this time, especially food accommodations and possibly food services. So then what we did with that is we took those numbers and we broke them down because we know retailers, and there's a lot of different retailers. And the way a retailer submits their property tax is based on their description of their business. If we move ahead of one slide to Slide 13, if you've had a chance to look at that, that kind of gives you a description of what types of retailers are filing and which categories. They're all assigned a number based on their industry. And so for you to say, oh, that's a department store, I know what that is, you might be surprised because it's not necessarily as black and white as that. So we'll try to give you as much detail as we can. We cannot give information on specific retailers because we've signed confidentiality agreements with the state of Kansas. That's not, it's proprietary information we're not allowed to release. But we'll try to give you as much broad information so that you can kind of get an understanding of what that looks like. So in the retail trade, which as I mentioned earlier, was about 62% of our retail, our sales tax, about 22% of that is from automobile dealers. 17% is from department stores, 14% from grocery stores, 12% from building material. General merchandise stores, including warehouses and supercenters, is 8%. And then the numbers go down from there. Something we haven't really been able to put our finger on is the auto dealers because there's some different speculation as far as what's going to happen to those. We assume that they're going to go down, but I don't know. They're pretty good salesmen when they come out with it, so it's hard to know what's going to be on that. So then what we even did further than that, we found this estimate from Moody's, which they took the retail sector and they tried to break down by subsection, which ones they thought would be the most affected and by how much in 2020. So this is their estimate for 2020. So as you can see, department stores, the ones they categorize as department stores, they see being down 40% by the end of 2020. Apparel and footwear, they're the same. Whereas if you move across the graph, you'll see they have home improvement stores going up, discount and dollar stores going up, supermarkets going up, drugstores and convenience stores going up. So there's a real mix of which ones will go up and which ones will go down. So as we did our analysis on this, we took this information and tried to apply it to the categories that we had, based on who we knew were in those categories. So we did a review of all the top industries. This is kind of an explanation of what you're going to see in the next several pages of graphs, and I apologize for the size of them, but there's a lot of information in there that we were trying to account for. It wasn't as easy as, it's going to be down 40% for the year because it may be down 100% in April, but then it may go up, and it may go up a little bit in each month. And depending on what their collections were for those particular months, we went to that level. We wanted to say, if I typically, if we typically get 60% of our sales tax from that particular industry in June, then we want to know what the effect of June is. We don't want to know what the effect of the whole year was. So when Tara built these spreadsheets, she built them to the month level, to each of these sub-industries, so we could take an effect of those, these stay-at-home orders and the other factors, month by month. Let's see what else. Anything else on this slide? So then we get to the real guts of the spreadsheets, and like I said, I apologize. So as I was explaining earlier, what we did was we broke these down by month and tried to estimate in that month, what is going to be the effect on these particular service industries. So for example, the first line on there is sporting goods, hobby, and musical instrument stores. April, and the portions highlighted in yellow were the ones that we were looking at because the first three were already done. We're done with those three months. So these are the, these are sales that happen, or these are distributions that we get in these particular months. So for example, for sporting goods in June, which is the sales that are happening now in April, we believe that we will only collect 5% of what we normally would. So we believe that 95% of what we would have collected will be uncollected at that time. So we assess those percentages throughout the end of the year. We tried to get to a total net change in the last column of a number that was close to what Moody's had predicted in that prior slide. So we kind of have played, and this is the graph that we have, that Tara has built, that we can go through this graph and make changes. So as we get our April numbers, we can change that number to what it truly is, and we can create that projection once again. So it's going to be very, it's going to be a very important tool for us to be able to use as we move along the year and be able to look up what those projections are now going to be. So as we change those projections, it obviously changes the projections of what we believe we'll collect at the end of the year. And we did that based on the average three years prior to what we had collected in the prior three years, the percentage we had collected in those years. So this table gives you all the retailers broken down to sub-industries, down to restaurants, travel accommodation. Are there any questions on this particular slide?
This is based on the Moody's report?
Yes, we tried to make the final percent change in 2020 on the right-hand column, as close to the Moody's report as we could get it based on the particular sub-industries. Some of them we just didn't match. We couldn't match, so we had to make some assumptions in those. So we tried to get close to those numbers.
Mike's Craig here. There's a couple categories where Moody's didn't shed a lot of light, but we tried to go research other sources. Automobiles in particular, I think the information we provide you, you had an article where they talked about being down to 30% as their projected amount.
Yeah, I know Moody's kind of skipped around a little bit and didn't cover all the categories, and who knows if they classify them the same way that our sales taxes classified, you know?
Right, right. So we also included in that projection on that slide, use tax, but because what we're finding is, as our sales tax might be flattening out a little bit in 2020, our use tax is actually going up a little bit because of people buying online, and especially this need now to buy online. So we're trying, we get those two numbers separately, so we're trying to track those two numbers separately to see if they have any, you know, countereffects on each other.
Mike's Craig again. You may recall that, you know, the whole online sales tax question has been something that we've been paying attention to for a while, and the Director of Revenue issued an opinion in a directive that all online sales in Kansas had to be subject to the online tax last October. So irrespective of COVID-19, we were seeing an increase in online sales tax. And then if you add to that the factor that Ms. Pack mentioned in terms of people possibly gravitating online, we tried to factor that in as well.
So Slide 17 kind of gives you a summary of what that number looks like. The bottom line, the projected compared to budget, year-to-date for each month. As you can see, the first three periods, we were over our projected collection for the month. We expect that in April also. But as you get to those months where this is affecting us, we can see that number. And so our total projection for sales and use tax is a little over $1.8 million deficit at the end of the year, based on our 2020 budget projections. So the next category we took a look at was property tax, because that's our next largest revenue source. It's 24% of our general fund budget at a little over $10 million. The assumption we made in this is that we would reach a delinquency rate of 10% based on the information that we saw before. We may never hit there, but we wanted to be very conservative, not knowing exactly what the effect of this would be. We have not seen any delays in due dates. We've seen delays in due dates for other types of payments that the city and the counties will receive, but we have not seen one in that. Our next due date is May 10th. I would anticipate that COVID would not affect that because most of those payments, from my experience, probably 60% of the payments are made through escrows, which people are putting into prior to that payment ever coming due. So for property tax, I kind of put the table in there. It's pretty small, but property tax, the levies are, the valuations are done at the beginning of January, they're finalized in June, so we'll get those in June. Those levies will be done in November, so the first payment will be due December 20th, and the second payment is due May 10th of the following year. So depending on where evaluations go and things like that, we may start to see, as people come out of this in unemployment, we may start to see more mortgage foreclosures and things like that, more property tax delinquencies. Those are just things that we're going to have to look at.
Mayor Hoppaker, do we know what percentage of our property tax that's collected is residential and how much of it's commercial? Because commercial real estate, in a lot of cases, wouldn't probably be escrowed, and those are some fairly substantial dollars.
True. I do not get that information, but I probably could.
Just be curious if it was what that percentage of commercial real estate would be.
Yeah, I'm trying to think if they provide that, even in the assessed valuations, I'm not sure that I get it, but I could certainly ask for it. I know the county would have that. The other graphic I showed on here was the delinquency rate since 2008. So you can see, our delinquency rate has been pretty low since that time, and then I also showed kind of where assessed valuations were, and they've been growing. So we hope those things, those trends continue. The graphic on the right shows that 56% of our property tax is typically collected in the first payment, which is the December 20th payment, and about 36% of that are the property tax that we collect is in the second payment. So the majority of our taxes would have probably already been collected. And then we have some stragglers in there that pay late or something like that later in the month. Those particular months that show percentages are actually the distribution months that the county distributes that to us. They have to distribute to us five or six times a year, and they're on a specific date of the year. So that's why those percentages tie to specific months, and they're not every month.
I would, Commissioner Franz, I've got to remember, I got to say that. I'd just point out on this graph, if you look back, or at this table, if you look back at 2008 through 2010...
2008 through 2013, you can see the effects of the last recession, or while they didn't approach 10%, they were certainly extended over a number of years, and I think maybe that's something we can expect again, no matter what level they get to, it's going to, property tax is just slower about everything. It doesn't go down quickly, it doesn't go up quickly. But that's a fairly significant difference from what it has been in recent years, and from what it was before those, that time.
Right, right. So the projections that we put together for this, for property tax, like I said, we assumed a 10% delinquency. So we're, our projections on this particular revenue source is that it'll come in 600, a little over $600,000 lower than what we budgeted. They're based on the three-year average that we collected in the prior three years.
Did you look at the debt service fund at all, or the bond and interest fund for property taxes? And I'm just wondering if the reserves are sufficient to cover a shortfall similar to what we might be looking at there?
We have looked at them, not specifically for this projection though, but I can certainly do that. Franchise fees is our next largest revenue, 16% of our total budget, that's a little over $7 million. Some of the things that we feel will affect this are the executive order precluding utilities to shut off, or that they're not allowed to shut off people that don't pay. We anticipate that they'll too, will have higher delinquency rates. We do have commercial manufacturing and educational usage that we believe could have reductions based on people staying at home, or non-essential businesses that aren't open at the, throughout the year. We're not sure whether we'll see residential usage increase because of people having to stay at home. That's probably smaller number than, than the commercial. We don't know what the reductions and cancellations on franchise fees will be on discretionary items such as cable, cell phones, internet. If people get too, into too much financial trouble, those would hopefully be the first things that go. But we, so we'll have to keep an eye on those types of things to see if those numbers are moving. And then again, from our perspective, most of our major users are categorized as essential, so we're hoping that that'll be a benefit to us. You can see on that bottom graph, the highest collection of franchise fees that we receive are from electric, then water, our wastewater and water, gas, cable, and then the others, video and solid waste and wireless are pretty low compared to the others. The dip, we wanted to remind you, the dip in the, in the electric in 2019 was from the tax credits that they took, the tax and merger credits that they took from Westar. So that's why that number looks significantly lower. Any questions on franchise fees? So on the next table, we've done the same analysis with the percentage of decreases. We, we believe that, like we said, the more discretionary ones, the cable, the internet, the cellphone type things will be decreased at a lot, a higher rate. So we're looking at those to be only at an 80%, 80% collection. The others, we think will stay at about 90, because those are things that people need, and a lot of the essential services that we have, the bigger companies in town will still, are still in business.
Mayor Hoppick, I know the school district had to purchase hotspots and that type of thing. Do they pay a franchise fee, or are they exempt?
The school district doesn't pay it directly to us, so I don't know if they pay a fee to the, the utility provider. In most tax cases, the school district would be exempt, so I'm not sure whether they would be or not. I know property tax and things like that, they're exempt, and sales tax, so they may be exempt from that, so it may not have a, might not help us as much. But the users of those, those people, well, no, if they're paying for it, they wouldn't. But there again. So our estimate for loss on this one from budget is about $600,000 on franchise fees. The next source we looked at was EMS revenue, which is about 8% of our revenue, at $3.5 million budgeted for 2020. This revenue comes in from several sources. One is from the county, which is about 30%. As you know, they support our EMS function, so they pay us a fee every year. Insurance pays 59% of our payments, which includes Medicare and Medicaid. Personal payments are only about 4%, so that's pretty small, from that perspective. Some of the things we looked at were call volume. From what we're hearing from the fire department, that's remained steady so far. There could be a possible increase in call volume based on people getting the virus. The insurance payments, like I mentioned, were about 59%, so we would not anticipate that that, the payments from the insurance companies are going to go down. However, if people can no longer afford insurance because they're unemployed, that may cause us to have more in collections. The personal payments are only about 4% right now. We have a pretty good rate of payment history on EMS. One of the things that we would note is that we did raise our rates in EMS last year, because we found that the insurance companies would allow us to charge more. I can't remember specifically which one it was. I think it was Blue Cross, but I can't, I wouldn't quote that. So we did raise our rates on our comprehensive fee schedule last year, so we're hoping that we're going to start seeing that come in. One of the numbers that could be affecting our projections on this one is the county payment, because not only do they pay us for that support, they also reimburse us for the ambulance, which we believe is in this number. So this number may be elevated a bit. We need to reevaluate this number a little bit to see if that, that's causing this number to be up. But from our projections, we're expecting this number to go up. We're showing 600,000, but with that reevaluation, we really need to take a look at those other factors to make sure that we're not putting something in there that's affecting our projections, so.
Mayor Hoppick, yeah, on this, I would prefer that as far as potential increase in calls, that we left that flat and didn't try to, to...
We did.
Okay, did you? Okay. It says potential increase. I didn't know if that meant we increased it by a percentage or anything, so.
Right. There's a lot going on here, and as by way of explanation, we felt like we were seeing it trending up in the months, the 2020 months that we had data, partially because of the rate increase. So we tried to, and the statement that call volume has remained steady, that's specific to, since we've seen the stay-at-home order and the COVID-19 outbreak, we're trying to get a sense of what that activity might look like. In fact, I think there's a little bit of observation that optional calls that we used to run, we aren't getting as many of those. People are choosing to alternate methods in the emergency room maybe, but we're still seeing call volume as a whole remain the same. So we're trying to factor in revenue growth that we'd seen prior to March, remaining steady in terms of call volume, not counting on increased call volume as it relates to COVID-19. And then we do need to look at whether the county's reimbursement of the ambulance is part of that added revenue that we identified.
Mayor Hoppick again, because this would include what we get paid to transfer patients to Wichita to Pika, Kansas City, and I would guess, based on COVID-19, that that has been reduced.
We're still transferring, but we are not transferring COVID-19 patients, but we're transferring others.
Right, but I mean, it's still, okay. I wasn't sure that they would even, okay.
Commissioner Franz, if I can add my two cents, I was puzzled by this number also, but being a bit of a numbers geek, I went in and I looked at the Department of Health and Environment's case count, and looked at the number of cases and the number of hospitalizations, and tried to transpose that down to Saline County. And based on that kind of generic analysis, and based on the projection of cases in Saline County, and who knows how accurate that might be, it looks to me like we could expect somewhere, I'm going to say between 700, 600 and 800, calls to transport people, presuming most of them use ambulance transport. And that would work out very closely to a $700,000 number, just generically. So while we might not want to rely on that, because we don't actually know how many of those folks use an ambulance versus how many are transported privately, you know, it's anybody's guess as to how many cases and how many hospitalizations we're going to see here. But at least that, you know, I'm not, based on that, I'm not terribly uncomfortable with this number, but I do think it's pretty rosy. So there's a lot of different ways to look at this.
As we move on, Commissioner Hodges, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Oh, that's, that's fine. We've been going for an hour, and I just wanted to make sure we hadn't dropped you or anything, so, okay.
No, thank you. I was just...
Okay.
So the next one is, that we took a look at was fees and charges. This is about 4% of our revenue, which is about 1.6 million. This is a lot of our parks and rec numbers, charges for building services and things like that. As we know, something that's going to be a huge effect on us is our parks and rec programming, postponements, cancellations, and closures. The possible decreased participation, even as we, as we get back, are people going to be comfortable? Are they going to have the discretionary spending to be able to afford to be in these programs? Delays and cancellations of participation due to the stay-at-home orders. We don't know what mass gathering limitations are going to be, and like I said, just people's perspective of not wanting to be out in public in general. The expect, the expense estimates do not include work comp or anticipated pay rate increases for, for the savings that we're participating, we're looking at in these assumptions. So what we tried to give you here is for the parks and rec programming, kind of where they were as far as their cost recovery rate, what their, their loss or gain over a year. These numbers are for 2019. So we just wanted to give you some specific information, how many participants we had in each of those programs. We didn't really do an assumption on these particular programs in general, but we just wanted to provide you with the information. As you go forward and try to make decisions, this gives you the information about, did this particular program, was it a low-cost recovery? Was it a high-cost recovery? Was, you know, how many participants would we be affecting? And information like that, we thought that was important as we make decisions moving forward.
Mike's Craig again.
Commissioner Hodges here?
Yep.
Can I ask a question about, for instance, items under athletics and the kids who are charged on regular days?
Yes.
I noticed that youth soccer and adult soccer both show extremely high-cost recovery, and just as, I know that we've outsource those programs, but we're really only putting $11,000 into the soccer field, the utilities, the watering of the field. It just, it just seems a little low to me for that hospitalization.
Do you want to take that, Debbie, or do you want me to? I think these numbers, that's a good point. This is Mike's Craig. I think these numbers reflect our staffing numbers, and it might be material that paint to line the fields, but I don't know that it reflects mowing and watering and those type of expenses. We reflect those as just an operational expense for the Parks Department. So, and that is a good point. There are a number of things that we know that we do in the way of support, Kenwood Cove being an example, where we have a utilities employee that provides considerable amount of support while they're open, to help them with pumps and mechanical issues that we haven't factored all that in. This is more of a, a pulling, extracting the numbers out of our accounting system that are more directly attributable to the operation of these programs.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mike's Craig here. The point I was going to make is, and we talked about it a little bit, I guess it was last week, in terms of just whether the, the fact that our assumptions about revenue or expenditure reductions assumes that we have not brought back part-time staff. So that, that assumes, you know, we don't have the part-time staffing to support essentially any of these programs. And the question was, do they make money? Do they lose money? Do they break even? And as you can see, a few of them, accounting for the clarification that I just gave, do make a little bit of money. But the, the uncertainty of when things might be able to start, whether we'll have stay-at-home orders or mass gathering restrictions, and whether we'll have discretionary spending cuts, caused me to think that none of them have enough of a margin of error to overcome those. Now, this is very much a policy decision that I think we're going to need to make. From a dollars and cents standpoint, the most predictable, the clearest path is just to not bring the staff on board and not have the programs for the year. As we talk about what our balances might look like and what program we want to offer, parks in general are a loss leader, and if we decide that that's a priority, I understand that, now may not be the time to be taking on loss leaders. That's a financial discussion we probably need to have once we get through this whole presentation.
Mayor Hoppick here, and I think we have to look at some of those and discuss, I understand whether it loses money or makes money, but again, some of this is considered a quality of life, when we're looking at some of the youth programs and different things. So we're going to have to weigh that in a little bit too, as to what that actual loss would be. I guess a question would be, and I don't know if it's at this point, but at what point do we start making decisions about whether we're going to be able to have a full program? We have to, you know, are we able to run a shortened year program for some of these? I guess, obviously until we know they've released, released the stay-at-home, we can't address those, so.
Right. Mike's Craig again. That's why we provided some of those other columns in that table, in terms of the season for each one of those activities, the program dates, the staff hiring target dates, and the number of staff, because we were trying to account, or at least start gathering that information, in terms of how long might we have before we have to make a decision. I can tell you, you know, Kenwood Cove, last year with no COVID-19 impacts, staffing was a challenge, to the point that we couldn't keep all the facilities open, and we had to close the lap pool, to the frustration of some. Just the conversations that we've had so far about Kenwood Cove, staff's been contacted about, by about 20 people that we were hopeful would be coming back, who've indicated they're looking elsewhere for employment this summer. So that creates another challenge. The longer we delay making that decision, and the longer the stay-at-home order stays in effect, I mean, we couldn't train lifeguards if we wanted to right now, but the longer that delays, the harder it's going to be for us to bring staff on board and get that program stood up.
So that's those two pages of all those programs through parks, as Mr. Craig said, that just gives you a lot of information for decisions that we're going to have to make coming forward. So the next page, Slide 26, is the overview of fees and charges and how our projections look for that. At the end of, at the end of the year, we're projecting a little over $900,000 reduction in, in collection on that compared to our budget in 2020. Municipal court is our next largest revenue source at 3%, a little over $1.2 million. Some of the factors that we have to consider are the temporary court closure, if one month delay is equal to 8%, which is approximately $100,000 in revenue. So if the courts closed for a month, and we're delaying those, or we're not collecting, or whatever that might be. We have redirected police activity, because our police officers are not out trying to interact with the public as much as they normally would, for their own safety. We have payment delays based on people with unemployment or not having the ability to actually make those payments. So our projections for these were pretty low, as you can see, we're down to 15, 15% collection rate in April because of stay-at-home order. We do have the ability to collect payments online for those cases that have already gone to court, and we ramped that back up to about 80% collection towards the end of the year. Projected, under-budget collection on this one is a little over $300,000 at the end of the year. Motor vehicle tax revenue is about 3%, or about $1.2 million of our general fund revenue. Some of the items that we need to take into account are, there is now a 60-day grace period for motor vehicle renewals, that was by executive order. We did confirm with the county motor vehicle department that those renewal notices are going out on time. However, people do have an additional 60 days to pay those. Timely payments, payments will still be made because they can make them online. There's several, they have several ways to make payments online for renewals. They are still taking appointments for new registrations, which obviously will be less than normal, because it's harder to get, come in. We have some concerns that there may be declines in motor vehicle purchases, even if it's a new car or a replacement. People's spending is going to be less, possibly due to unemployment, so they may decide to keep their cars another year, or something like that. year or something like that. The information we provided you here was the, the percentage that we collect this. This again is distributed from the county at their, every six times a year timeframe. 23% of that is typically collected in May, which would go, that collection period would go through. We get it the end of May. It usually goes through the middle of May. So, as long as those payments are coming in. And the, the graphic on the very right shows you the last letter. Kind of, this to me helps you know when most of them are going to come due, because you know when the letters of the alphabet are that most last names hit. So, we could tell in the motor vehicle world what months we're going to be very busy. So, the month of May, for example, is EFG. That might not be as big a month, or CD might be a larger month. So, that gives you kind of that information, how that's spread out throughout the year. We did make some assumptions that there'd be a 10% reduction in these, in this collection, which left us short about $99,000 in collection and revenue for motor vehicle tax in the general fund. License and permits revenue. We know that construction's still going on. It's an essential business. This is about 1% of our revenue, a little over $500,000. We don't know if that construction activity is going to remain the, at the level it is now. I'm sure the construction companies would want to, but we don't know if the demand is going to be there. I mentioned construction is considered an essential activity. We're not sure if that volume that we've seen recently is going to remain constant. Something that might help it is low interest rates. So, hopefully people will still continue to buy or build homes. We assumed that this would stay constant, so we did not make any changes to our projections. However, our collections were down slightly over the, from our average from the prior month or years. So, that's, we're estimating that it's going to come in about $28,000 under what we originally budgeted. Other revenue sources is about 1% or $500,000. We took a look at all of these and we projected that this was going to be about $14,000 less than what we originally budgeted, just based on what we have collected so far in, in 2020. Other taxes is less than 1. This would be our liquor tax. This is the tax that's, it's 10% of a tax paid on a drink that you buy at a bar or, or a restaurant. One-third of that goes to the general fund. So, the 70% of, of it is remitted to the city and one-third of that goes to the general fund. One-third goes to special parks and one-third goes to special alcohol. This number, we believe, will go down because of the, the bars and restaurants that aren't be able to be open to sell liquor by the drink. So, we've estimated that in, in our July projection would be down to 30% collection. This is collected quarterly. So, that collection would be what people would be spending in April, May, June. So, we believe that that will be down 70%. We believe the, the amount that we collect, are going to collect in the second quarter will be down about 10% because part of that would be affected by the, the stay-at-home orders, but not a, a great deal.
Commissioner Davis, this is actually a serious question, but does the city have the ability to regulate whether a restaurant bar can sell an alcoholic beverage to be delivered at home, or is that a state issue?
And this, Mike Skregg, I know there's been conversation, but that's at the state level.
My cousins in Washington DC told me that the restaurants there can send your favorite mixed drink home with your meal if it's delivered. And I said, yeah, that's, that was smart. I said, I have a feeling that's probably a state issue, but I'll ask.
I've been on, daily there, seven days a week, there are Kansas Department of Emergency Management calls and they go across the entire gamut of the state departments. And a lot of conversation is centered around self-serve soft drinks and whether the push-button screens are acceptable or not. And the state made a determination on that. And for what it's worth, they decided that you couldn't self-serve and employee had to serve you. And I, I've heard some conversation, but I don't know the outcome, about providing mixed drinks in some type of sealed container at the curbside to take home. But I don't know where that's lying.
In fact, they can actually sell an unopened bottle as well. But it must be more, more money in the liquor tax than, well, someone realized just how much money there is in the liquor tax.
It's a high-profit product. I'm sure of that.
So, with the assumptions that we made on, on this tax, we assumed that we'd be under budget in our collections, about $49,000 at the end of the year. We then took a look at investment revenue. We budgeted $140,000, which is less than 1%. We believe that budget amount was low because of the, the decision we made to allocate majority of our interest earnings to the general fund. That number did come in significantly higher last year. We do have a list of CDs that we have bought recently that mature over the next two-year period, which have locked in at some rates that we believe will stay, that'll stay at those higher rates. Future's uncertain on what that rates are, what those rates are going to be. We also have a decreasing general fund balance. So, the money that we're receiving in interest, we do receive interest in the money that we keep in our bank account, in our checking account. So, as that rate fluctuates, that interest income will also fluctuate. We are anticipating a gain in this, in this one, only based on the fact that we budgeted. We didn't budget as much as we, we thought we would actually allocate to this fund. So, we are expecting to be over our budget by 200, about $280,000 in this line item. So, this slide gives you a summary of the general fund, taking into account not only the revenue assumptions that we just went over, but some of the expenditure reductions that we've made so far. So, as you can see in the general fund, the, the estimated reduction of revenue is about $3.6 million, as, as our projections show in this from COVID-19. Our reductions in expenditures are about $2.2 million, leaving us about $1.4 million. The difference is about $1.4 million. We did have a little bit when we budgeted that we were going to budget to the good. So, we're still going to, we're still looking at a negative impact of about $1.4 million. Our ending fund balance at the end of 2819, pre-audit, was about $7 million. So, if we ended up with this negative $1.4 million, that would reduce our fund balance to about $5.6 million.
Mike Skregg, if I could offer a couple of observations on the expenditure reductions, the largest by far is personnel. And that's the assumption of essentially all part-time personnel expenditures being avoided. And that factors into that parks and rec conversation in particular. And then, at the outset, I said that we, we weren't intending to draw on reserves. And to clarify that statement a little bit, I see that $1.4 million number as, as a gap yet to be solved. And we, we don't have a whole lot left on the table other than personnel. But the, part of that's a financial policy decision that we need to make. But given the uncertainty, my recommendation would be that our, we need to preserve our reserve balances so we can get a little bit more time behind us and see what, how this is going to play out. How March and April have impacted our sales tax revenue, and then also how we're recovering, whether the curve's getting flattened, whether other countries are coming out of stay-at-home orders and having to go back into them to get a better sense of what the future might hold.
Do we want to finish through the slides and then we can address, address that? Okay.
This one's, it's just really a summary of what I just told you. The reduction of $3.6 million is about an 8.3% reduction of, of our budgeted revenue. The reduction of $2.2 million in expenditures is about a 5% reduction. There again showing what the, the final impact is. Oops. The other funds, as you mentioned earlier, Commissioner Franz, that are going to be affected are, are other funds that are affected by sales tax, by property tax, by transient guest tax. So, we tried to take a look at, based on the assumptions that we made in the general fund for those revenues, what that effect would have on some of our other funds. In the sales tax capital fund, we believe that is going to reduce our revenue to about $7 million from $8.3 million. We have made some reductions in sales tax based on the information that, the guidance you gave us last week on purchase of vehicles and equipment. And we will possibly have some other reductions based on our conversation that we'll have today about projects. So, in the end, our, our revenue, our, the numbers there will look a little bit better than they did at first because our reductions are higher than our, what our reduction in revenue is. The other one we took, took a look at was the sales tax economic development fund. This fund originally, in the budget, was going to be in a deficit of about $34,000. With the projections that we have in this, in this model, they'll be in the deficit of about $85,000. That fund does have a $700,000 fund balance at the beginning of the year, which would then go down to a little bit over $600,000 if these projections hold out. The other funds we wanted to look at were the special parks and recreation fund. That's the one that I mentioned earlier that gets a third of that alcohol tax. We took that into consideration in this fund, reducing that revenue. We have budgeted that, that original, original budget would be that that fund had a surplus of $3,800. With that renewed revenue estimate, we'd say that this fund, if we spent the expenditures, this is spent on anything, any maintenance or in parks and recreation programs or facilities. So, if we chose not to use that $194,000, then this would certainly stand. But if we chose to use that funding, then we do have a little bit of fund balance in here. We started with about $348,000 in fund balance. With this revenue estimate and the budgeted spending that we have budgeted, we'd still have about $273,000 in this fund. So, we do have a little bit of funding in this fund if we needed to transfer some of those parks expenditures that we might be looking at later into this fund. So, that, we do have that possibility. The other fund that I know is important to look at is the Tony's Pizza Event Center Fund. We reduced that revenue from $830,000 to $602,000 on this, based on these projections. That fund did have a fund balance of a little over, about $200,000 at the end of the year. With the recommendation to hold on to the basketball purchase that we're going to look at a little bit later, that fund balance would absorb the loss of $138,000. We did not take into account any of the measures that Spectra is taking at T-PAC. We didn't have dollar amounts attached to those. As you recall, Mr. Skregg mentioned last year that, or last week, that they are doing some, they are taking a lot of measures to reduce their expenditures. So, we didn't have dollar amounts on those. So, we did not take any of that into consideration. So, there could be some, some more movement in that fund that we're not, we just don't have the numbers for at this time.
If I could add to that just a little bit. Mike Skregg again. You may recall at the study session where the Spectra presented, Susan Trafton, the local general manager, kind of itemized some of the measures that they were taking. She also indicated they're rescheduling, so they have people changing dates and they're hopeful they'll, they'll come back in the fall. But since that time, they've shared with us that they have furloughed five of their key staff members. And so, they're going to continue to pay their health benefits, but they've, they've furloughed them as an additional cost-saving measure. So, they've been proactive both in terms of their efforts and their communications. Don't know, don't know how to quantify that just yet, but they are making efforts to try to respond to COVID and, and try to continue to monitor their operating margin.
And the, the last fund that we looked at was the golf fund. With the closure of the golf course, we took that into consideration on the revenues. So, their revenues reduced from about $928,000 to $865,000. That would put them in a deficit position at the end of the year. We did not look at any of their expenditures, only because we don't, we didn't know what was going to happen to those. I expect that we'll have a reduction in commodities from that closure. But we did not have, we did not look into those specifically. That fund does not have a significant fund balance. So, if we can't make reductions in those expenditures and those revenues are shortfall by that, there could be a, a point at time where the general fund would have to support them at some point. The other revenue that we wanted to take a look at, that, that is not part of the general fund, but is, is a significant revenue source for us is gas tax. This is 24 cents per gallon on gasoline. It doesn't matter what the price of gallon, the price of gas is, because they still pay 24 cents. But it does matter how much they sell. So, the city receives this based on per capita distribution, and it's used for the construction, reconstruction, repair, and maintenance of streets and highways of the city. It can also be used up to 10% on any public transportation project. Some of the things that we will need to consider is travel reductions based on the stay-at-homes, so people aren't using as much gas. I put a little history of where that fund has been over the past few years, just to give you some perspective. We have a fund balance and they're about $1.8 million, or at the end of 2019, of about $1.8 million. We do have quite a bit of spending that we do for streets projects out of that fund. But we're still anticipating that the fund balance at the end of 2020 would be $1.8 million, based on the original revenues. We didn't really estimate a, a change in that revenue, so.
Commissioner Franz here. I did see an article yesterday about gas tax in general. And the comment there was made is the vast majority of gas tax is paid by commercial entities, truckers and so on, and not necessarily automobiles. So, the, the thought there was it will be impacted, but not nearly as seriously as we might think just looking at our personal consumption. If it was my personal consumption, the fund would be broke already, you know? But, so that is probably less of a concern than many other, and we have good control over those expenses because they're for a limited number of things that we can either decide to go or not go with.
Right. The other one that we wanted to look at was Kansas Federal Fund Exchange Dollars. As you may or may not remember, this is funding that is brought, it comes down from the federal government to the state, and then the state sells, sells it to cities at a reduced rates or percentage per dollar. And it, it really opens up the ability for cities to use this funding in a less stringent way than the federal guidelines would require. Because federal guidelines, if you've ever used grant money from the federal government, they have some pretty strict guidelines. But this allows us, but we buy it at a percentage on the dollar. So, I don't know, I can't remember what the percentage was last year, but it's in the 0.90 something. So, this year, we're getting an, an estimated amount of about $897,000. And that's about twice as much as we normally get, because there was a calculation error in prior years. So, we're kind of getting a little bonus. So, you can see what we've received in the past. It's usually around $400,000 to $500,000. And this is, this too can be used on any street project that, that kind of fits into the categories of maintenance or, or on the, on the streets and public roadways in the city. And we'll talk about this, the usage of this funding more when we look at the projects. We don't anticipate this to change. It could go up based on what the federal government does in their, in their grant funds to the city, or to the state. The last slide is just a summary of both the general fund and the sales tax fund. Because we do use, we do transfer money from the sales tax fund as, to the general fund, we wanted to kind of put those numbers together. So, our estimates are showing that the general fund will be under budget by $1.4 million. And the sales tax fund will have excess of budget, about $820,000, which leaves us at a deficit through the, the two funds of about $600,000. And that's all the good news I can give you for the day.
Mike Skregg, if I can recap a little bit, I guess some of the things that will be helpful at this point in terms of the conversation is your sense of what I keep referring to as the order of magnitude, whether we are in the right range, or whether you think we're being too conservative or not conservative, fiscally conservative enough. Deb, Ms. Pack has identified the shortfall in two different ways. We've, we've identified a shortfall in the general fund of $1.4 million. If you compare general fund and sales tax fund, and you're willing to transfer dollars between the funds, then it's like $600,000. There's other ways to address the shortfall in the short term and the long term. And then I mentioned kind of that part-time staffing decision, programming decision. And I understand some of that. There's more information to be had. You may task us with coming back with more information. And then one of the things that we're actively working on is trying to get more clarity on the unemployment benefits that the federal government's provided, the state process, and, and furloughs. I would, I hesitate to say this because I could be, and my assumptions could be wrong. But I tried to get, gain an understanding of the state unemployment program, the federal $600 a week addition. And I would tell you, I've seen multiple sources where it says $600 a week, and then there's there's an article in the Topeka Capital Journal, and it was printed in the Siena Journal that it was $600 a month. Obviously, that makes a drastic difference, but my understanding is it's $600 a week. So doing the math as I understand it, and you may recall, some of the debate about the stimulus was that certain individuals might actually receive more on unemployment than they would other, just through a normal paycheck. So I tried to calculate a breakpoint of a pay rate, an annual pay rate, that would be left whole with the state unemployment benefits combined with the federal benefits. And then anything below that might actually receive more in unemployment benefits than they might receive working. And so by my calculation, that break even points about $56,000 a year. So I think we, staff owes you more information about furloughs, layoffs, how that might work, as well as whether we can continue to provide health insurance benefits to our employees, which I believe we could in a furlough situation. So that might be an interim measure to try to address some personnel expenses and frankly, take a little bit of, that's about our only opportunity to see a benefit from some of the stimulus packages as they've been structured so far. That might be a way to mitigate some costs in a 39-week window possibly. So with that, I'll, Ms. Pack and I will be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. And Tara Sauer is on the line as well. She's, she knows the nuts and bolts of this as much as Debbie or I do, and we might need to call on her to help us out.
I have some questions. Go ahead.
Commissioner Davis, on page 16, slide 16, look as if, I'm just going to select travel accommodations. The first uptick would be September, which would reflect July occupancy, I would assume.
Correct.
Right. I think it's Virginia, but extending there, stay-at-home through June already. And, you know, you look at the business, which is sort of a rebound or a ripple from travel. It's restaurants, it's sales, because people come here for whatever reason, and they go to the stores and buy stuff because a lot of times folks are coming from smaller cities. Much as I hate to say it, I have a feeling our own stay-at-home would probably be extended well beyond April. And just listening to even sports radio, oh, we're going to get college football started back. And, well, you know, believe me, denial is having a good time living in my head as well. But when you start looking at the scientific realities of how diseases spread and rebound and go on these roller coaster rides, this all seems a little too optimistic right now. And I have a feeling we may need to put another, at least for Plan B, another three, four months of where we are now into the working scenario and see what Plan B looks like because that may be the plan we're actually going to ultimately have to face, particularly when we get down to choosing between services and employees or fund balance. So I didn't necessarily expect an answer, but just a comment.
I can't argue with any of that. In fact, over-correcting at this point might be the prudent thing to do. If we've over-corrected and find out that it's not as bad as we planned for, we can certainly put things back in place, whether it's projects or budgeted expenditures. If we under-correct, it's going to be hard to catch up if we're behind that curve. Right.
Commissioner Hodges here. Let me know when it would be appropriate for me to speak since there's a delay and I can't tell what people are wrapping up. So just give me the high time whenever I can ask a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would like to agree, and I think that our, I think that our projections are pretty rosy, and I mean, decreasing our revenues by 8.34%, and expenditures by 5%, it seems that, you know, I would prefer to be over-correcting in terms of, you know, I was frankly, I was expecting to do something more along the lines of 15, 20, 25%. And I realize that you've got the system, but I think from, you know, where I'm kind of from at this point, I would agree that this point lasts a long time. And like we may, we may be dealing with cyclical stay-at-home orders for quite some time. And I hope, I think we're very pessimistic, but I think that we really need to be looking at making further cuts in our expenditure and, you know, I'm wrong. And then the other thing was, perhaps maybe better to do our next contract, but have we reached out, we've contracted with, whether that was like, Salina Downtown, the CEO, this is Salina, and spoken with them about the impact that they may have on them. Because honestly, once I'm seeing us going in, you know, going to negative 1.4 million, I think that that change has got to be spread around not only from, you know, the city and our employees, but also some of the agencies that you contract with. And that's not just my sense, but that sales tax fund is coming down at a pretty rapid rate, and so is our general fund. So I would just like the ESG optimization to be developed as a plan, you know, to reduce the burden.
Mike Scragg here. We can certainly do that. I would point out, CVB, the way it's currently set up is a pass-through, so as we see a reduction, they see a one-for-one reduction in their funding. I think most others, that's not the case. There's an agreed-upon amount that we could revisit and talk about adjusting. And then with respect to expenditures, staff does not at all disagree. My suggestion would be that we, you know, we focused on expenditures when we first had the conversation. I think there's value in making a run at the revenue projections, and we tried to do that based on what we could find in the way of publications. But if the consensus is we think it's going to be worse, then I think the focus needs to get back to reducing expenditures. I mean, refining revenue projections is pretty difficult at this time. That's why I kept referring to it as an order of magnitude, and I've only heard from two of you so far, but what I'm hearing is the order of magnitude might be, not be large enough, and we need to be thinking greater.
Commissioner Hodges here. And something I'd like to say is, I really want to thank Tara and Debbie for doing the kind of detailed analysis that they've done with their revenue projections and everything. I mean, I think it's an extremely valuable exercise and information to have. And I just want to say, I for one truly appreciate the amount of effort and detail that it went into that. And in regard to the printing just asking, you know, a pass-through account, I mean, this is a pretty extraordinary time, and we might need to visit whether or not we need to adjust those percentages. And that's really what I want to say about that, so thank you.
This is Debbie Pack, Director of Revenue. I was just going to mention that if we remove the assumptions that EMS and the interest would go up, that does bring us to about a 10% reduction in expenditure. So I think that that will look more realistic than maybe this does, but I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Mayor Hoppich.
Yes, go ahead.
I actually went through the work because as I spent time on this issue, it was, it just seems like there were lots of loose threads to pick at. And so I actually prepared a statement that I will go through now. For several months, I've read economists, epidemiologists, financial advisors, business consultants, health professionals, and others who have written about the public health threat posed by COVID-19 and the economic consequences of mitigation. The consensus of medical professionals is this is more than a three-month or a six-month inconvenience. This will last 12 months, 18 months, or more. Nearly all of the epidemiologists and health experts project a roller coaster ride. Spread of COVID-19 will be controlled, hopefully, restrictions relaxed, and infections will surge once again, requiring a new round of restrictions. Some project social distancing and prohibition on large gatherings will require two months on, then a month free of that, and then it'll have to be imposed again to try to limit the peaks of the infection. This will be happening until an effective vaccine is developed or we have developed a herd immunity, and at least 18 months to two years. All economic and financial projections I've seen seem to ignore those public health projections and assume that the pandemic will end at the latest in June or July, and then we can begin the business of getting back to normal. In my view, that's unrealistically optimistic. The roller coaster will have profound consequences for many of our city programs. We have to figure out how to conduct essential business long-term. City commission meetings, planning commission meetings, operation of the municipal court come to mind immediately. City programs such as the Field House, T-PAC, nearly all recreation programs, including Kenwood Cove, and sports programming will be on indefinite hold. Cities' revenue will be seriously affected. Even assuming a June end date, we can anticipate some components will be reduced by 50% or more. I expect the annualized impact on our general fund alone will be on the order of $5 million per year. Special sales tax fund, an important companion to the general fund, faces a potential $3 million annual reduction. Our tourism tax, smaller but still important, may face an 80% reduction. Other funds will also face financial challenges. I dedicated my life to professional service. It's very painful for me to consider the effects on our citizens and our employees. For 39 years, I lived and worked side by side with you and others like you, and know full well the dedication and pride you bring to your jobs. We as community, and organization, and individuals must change our framework of thinking about what normal is, what essential services are. Much of what we deemed essential during normal times is non-essential in the current environment. We have to act before we know all the answers. We must focus on core essential, really essential services. We will have to suspend services that go beyond the core, that we take pride in, that make the community special. We must make choices once thought unthinkable. Nothing, in my view, is exempt. The sooner we begin mitigation, the more effective we can be. Staff projections presented today are a start and help move us forward. We must continuously reassess changing financial circumstances and modify our approach as Staff requests a commission consensus. I would propose the following framework to achieve a consensus. First of all, the city of Salina cannot borrow money to operate. We're not like the federal government. We must either find additional resources or reduce expenditures. There are no other choices. We must hang on to every cent of our reserves and savings from capital reductions. We may yet need some of those if critical items fail, and we also will need as much operating reserve as possible to deal with future uncertainty. And I have a series of suggestions here that I think are worth talking about. We should, to the greatest extent possible, keep our commitments and move forward with projects already under construction. Staff has provided a summary of reductions in part-time personnel, commodities, and contractual services, those need to be ratified today. Leadership by example is critically important. City commission should reduce several of the supplies and contractual service items in our own budget. They're small, but as I say, leadership by example. Dues and employee development come to mind. If they've not done so already, and I believe they have, the city manager's office should do the same. The city should approach all vendors whom we have a contract for services and ask for a 10% voluntary reduction for the year. This includes bond counsel, financial advisors, Salina Downtown Inc., Salina Community Economic Development Organization, legal counsel, building authority, we pay them rent, auditors, Salina Media Connection, cell service providers, insurance carriers, software support, and I could go on for quite a long time. As I said, nothing is exempt. That leaves us with personnel. The staff report identifies a remaining deficit of 1.5 million, and I am in agreement that that is probably on the light side. Presuming an average compensation of $50,000 including benefits, the deficit equates to 30 full-time staff positions. As a first step, I suggest asking all full-time employees for a 10% volunteer reduction in pay for 90 days, beginning May 1st, perhaps on a graduated scale to protect those most vulnerable on the lower steps of our pay scale. The 90-day period gives management and the city commission a 60-day window to assess changing conditions, and then 30 days to decide on how to move forward. A 10% reduction across the board saves 54 general fund positions. A 5% reduction would save 27 positions. If we're unable to do a voluntary reduction, perhaps the city commission could mandate an across-the-board reduction, again for a 90-day period. If all else fails, we must reduce staff levels. A preferred approach might be a 90-day furlough without pay beginning on May 1. This provides a limited response and the ability to assess and adjust as possible. I would like to see us do this in a way that allows continuing benefits, particular health insurance, if we can do so without compromising employee eligibility for unemployment Staff will need to investigate and report back to us on this. If short-term furloughs are impossible, cities left with a standard reduction in force of indefinite duration. And in my view, we need to get this done as soon as possible. The longer we wait, the more difficult it's going to be. And if we wait until we get the June sales tax, I think we're going to really be behind the eight ball. I think it's likely that the stay-at-home orders are going to be renewed for at least another 30 days. Projections I've seen say that we aren't expected to peak until, in Kansas anyway, until late April, early May, and after we peak, that's just when the number of cases stops increasing. We will still get new cases, probably for another 30 to 60 days, and it's going to be another 30 days beyond that to ensure that we don't have a lot of infectious folks walking around. So if you add all that up, you get to August or September in terms of economic impact, which is very different than April and May. And that's, I guess, I don't, I guess that makes my position pretty clear. I think we need to do a lot of things as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Franz.
Commissioner Ryan here. Well, I don't think that I'm ready to pull the doomsday card just yet, but many of the remarks that Mr. Franz makes should be considered. I'd like to thank especially the staff for all the background information they gave us. I especially appreciate the Moody's and the Morning Stars and Imperial College, those things that are a little more rigorous in their thinking about where we stand. I think the staff's presented a pretty reasonable approach. We could be more cautious. I think that most of the park programs are, I don't know if those were factored into those numbers, but they are in the next proposals. Those are going to have to be considered to be put on hold because my greatest feeling about the recurrence, as the Imperial College suggests, is that's going to be with future gatherings of people allowed, and I have great faith in the citizens of Salina to be able to continue social distancing and apply themselves to that. I think the biggest decision we're going to have is going to come from the school board and what they're going to do with our children and when we have to go back to school and how we're going to continue their education because that'll be what pushes a renewal of the peaks, in my opinion. But I'd like to hear the rest of the city's proposals, and I guess I'm But I'd like to hear the rest of the city's proposals, and I guess I'm comfortable with what I'm hearing at this point.
Commissioner Davis, that one of that.
Solve the feedback loop.
I made a little note to myself to thank the staff for all the work you did and forgot to read that little part, but you know, it's one thing to come in and pick a document apart. We really, I don't think, picked it apart, but I mean, to have something to look at and give comments is a luxury, at least for me, because you got about 30 million experts in the world right now and trying to figure out which reports you're going to listen to and which ones are too far one way or too far the other, and come up with a document is very hard work. And this is a lot of work since we last met. I'll wait for the mayor to ask us where we want to go individually, but I just did want to get that comment out. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could jump in. Commissioner Hodges, I went ahead and muted you when we had the feedback in that, I don't know if that was the solution or not. I'm going to unmute you and see if you're able to hear us and whether we get any feedback. You're unmuted, Commissioner Hodges.
I can hear you, but I think that speech is uncontributing to the feedback. So what I propose is I'm going to call in just like a regular person, and if there's something that I would, you know, like to ask or speak to, I'll just press star nine just like anybody else would because I can still listen in, and hopefully that will take care of some of the feedback.
Okay. You are called in like any other person, so I can mute you and then just pay attention to when you star nine.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking my mind might like to do, but first, I want to, to this Commissioner Hodges, I do want to thank Commissioner Franz for his analysis. I think, I think I was really liking what I heard, and I would be more than happy to, you know, to discuss all of those things at next meeting if possible because I think he's absolutely right in terms of the longer that we put this off, the deeper that we're going to have to go and the more hurtful it's going to be. So I just wanted to reiterate that I really appreciate his analysis, and I'm blessed to have his expertise on the commission. The other thing that I had thought while I was sitting here is the effect that this is going to have on our health insurance, to free our self-insured. I just wanted to see if Ms. Fisher has done any investigation in terms of the implications for, you know, corporate extensions, what the number when our catastrophic back-up insurance goes into effect, any thing of that, because I think that's another thing that we're possibly going to, we might see some unintended consequences coming along with our self-insure policy.
Mike's Craig, I can respond to that a little bit. We've had conversations about the need to continue to monitor the self-insurance fund balance, and we're not seeing anything COVID-19-related at the moment. With respect to COBRA, that really becomes a function of what next step we might take with respect to personnel. If, and that's where we're trying to make sure we have a good understanding of the distinction between layoffs and furloughs, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I think furloughs create an opportunity to reduce hours for a specified amount of time, retain health insurance benefits, and then reassess when we get a little further out into the future.
Great, thank you. And I was calling now, but thank you for letting me get in on the conversation.
I guess one other thing I would add, when we did the essential, nonessential designation, we did that kind of looking at who could we make arrangements so they could stay at home and observe the stay-at-home order, either for the full month or at least in some partial way. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have any expectation that people that we've said are nonessential for the stay-at-home order purpose, that we could do without that position for an extended amount of time. You know, so it would take an entirely different assessment if we were going to look at furloughing in some way. I'm not prepared to say that the same people that we've said we can have a stay-at-home, we could do without for an extended furlough.
Mayor Hoppick, and again, I want to thank staff. I had that as a note, and I know, having my office down the street, I know how often they're here and how many, on the weekends, are putting in tremendous amount of hours, and I want to thank all of them for that. And again, thank Commissioner Franz for his comments. I know this is a tough time for all of us, and I think he had some nice, some good points. I guess my question is, as we talk about furlough and layoffs, we, you know, what was it, week and a half, two weeks ago, we did the, or a week ago, we did the 80 hours? When does that come off, and when do we have to address that? Because it seems like we're about to bump up against that, and we've got some decisions that have to be made, I think, with our current employees. So I guess that's a question I'll ask first.
Yeah, Mike's Craig again. We started into the, our first pass at the Personnel Manual was based on the assumption that a stay-at-home order would qualify for emergency paid sick leave by the Families' First Coronas Response Act. And then we saw guidance or legal opinions prior to the Department of Labor issuing any of their guidance, because they had 15 days to do it, speculating that a stay-at-home order didn't rise to the level of a quarantine or an isolation order as the legislation described. So staff brought back to you an amendment to the Personnel Manual to try to address that discrepancy. Thursday or Friday of last week, the Department of Labor released their guidance, and they've now indicated that stay-at-home orders rise to the level of the Families' First Act. So as a result of that, there is 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave by the act. Now, as a city, we don't get reimbursed for that, but we are still subject to it. So our interpretation at the moment, and I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, I'm about, I don't know, two dozen pages into a 120-page document, but as Ms. Fisher and I have read it, it appears that the Department of Labor, Secretary of Labor, has provided guidance that a stay-at-home order rises to the level of that 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave. So if we combine that with what we tried to do, I think our employees have a combination of 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave and 80 hours of COVID leave that we created. We need to review that further, and we'll need to come back to you with more clarity. But I have, at the moment, I have every reason to believe that our employees now have the benefit of the emergency paid sick leave, as well as the 80 hours of COVID leave that we created on our books.
So when that will run out, essentially at the end of April or early May, I presume?
Correct. For an employee that is truly home because of the stay-at-home order, not working, you know, any limited amount of hours at all, then yes, four weeks.
Okay.
Now, we potentially have employees that are working, you know, far less than 40, but are working some, that would extend it a little bit, and we may have employees that were subject to a travel quarantine of some kind. And I honestly don't know if we have employees who are subject to a travel quarantine and then also subject to the stay-at-home order, or whether they're emergency essential employees, but you could have that scenario where, at that point, then they could either use their leave, and if they have no leave balance, they could do leave advancement. So.
Because Mayor Hoppick here, again, I think, as we discussed, we can do as much spending cuts as we want, and again, when 70% of your budget is personnel, depending on how deep this goes, obviously, that's a painful discussion we're going to have to have at some point.
What I'm hearing, what sounds like consensus to me, is additional cuts, additional savings measures beyond what we've identified so far, recognition that that involves personnel. What I would suggest is, between now and next week, we can come back with identification of a number of options and try to stratify them in terms of temporary measures all the way to more long-term structural changes, and give you some sense of cost savings, potential cost savings, and potential impacts on employees, the organization, and the community, and try to stratify those from, I guess, recognizing they're all impactful, but least impactful to most impactful, and try to facilitate that conversation.
Mayor Hoppick here, and I know that it's really hard to know what's going to happen. I mean, we're all just guessing right now. And, you know, the curve that showed will come in and out of it. I'm not sure how that affects us when we're dealing with personnel because you're not going to have an even flow of when we may have a stay-at-home order. I think it's going to be interesting. I did see where China just came out of their stay-at-home, and they were elbow-to-elbow at some different places, which was just mind-boggling. So I think there's some countries that are ahead of us as far as that, you know, getting back out into the public, and it's going to be interested, interesting for us to see how that starts affecting them. We may get a feel for what's going to happen to us a little bit. So we'll, we may have a little bit of history as we move into some of the decisions we have to make. I guess I'll ask for comments from the other commissioners as far as to some of the requests that, or the comments that Commissioner Franz made. So I see you have your hand up over here, Commissioner Davis?
My manual star nine here. Commissioner Davis, I was talking with my wife over the weekend, and I couldn't not remember the situation, but it was a company that was in dire straits, and they gave their employees a chance, the option of everyone taking a pay cut so that everyone could stick around longer, or, you know, playing Russian roulette and hoping your number didn't come up. But the number that they used was actually 30%. So I'm actually glad, I'm glad you did the math, that 10% would actually protect, and I don't know for how long would protect those jobs.
Well, Commissioner Franz here, according to the calculation I did, which was based on the budget for personnel and the general fund, 5% would nearly cover, would cover, I think I've calculated, 27 positions. Now, if you turn that into a furlough where we have to continue to pay benefits, or where we have the opportunity to do that, then it might, there'll, more positions would have to be, have to be involved in that to get to that same number. So it might have to be a little higher percentage than that, in that case, you know.
And I love the math on that, and I guess the wrinkle is that even though expenses can be reduced, or not expenses, salaries can be reduced 10% when we start having to mix that with furloughs, we, all of our jobs are not created equal. Practically speaking, we're not going to be able to furlough police and fire because we have to prepare for the fact that some of them may be getting sick. So, you know, they may present their own involuntary furlough to us, and we'll need a solution for that. Some of our employees may get sick, so some of the folks on furlough may get called back, you know, a day after they get home, oh, guess who got sick, or, and some of our employees just may age out and decide, eh, I'm going to take retirement now and be done with it. So there's a lot of variables that will affect that number, but I don't think it's at all unrealistic. I'd be honest with you, I don't have a problem with any of your suggestions.
Mike's Craig here. If I could add one thing, in the 2008 recession, we were able to reduce our employee count by attrition only. There are other communities that went to a revised schedule where they worked, you know, 36 hours or 32 hours rather than 40, and then there was a corresponding pay reduction for that. So another variation of what you're talking about is a lessened work schedule.
Just a technical question, is there a difference in benefits or any other designations if you reduce, let me see, 10%, if that would be 40, I would take a 40-hour job down to 36 as opposed to a 10% reduction in income? I probably understand the question I'm asking, judging by your eyes.
Yeah, I do. You know, we get to make that rule, I think. You know, if we determine, situation determines it, and we're going to, for a period of 90 days, pay full benefits for a 32-hour employee, we can do that.
That's correct. And take a policy amendment, we could do that.
But doesn't affect the ability to receive benefits that we would typically give.
How does that, Mayor Hoppick here, how does that affect capers?
Total compensation would be based on what they're ultimately paid, so total compensation would go down proportionally, but you could still provide, you know, full health insurance benefits.
Commissioner Franz here, at what level is, is there a level at which an employee is not eligible for capers?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to check.
Okay, commissioners, what direction do we wish to give staff for their, give Debbie something to do for next Monday?
If I, if it's helpful, Mike's Craig again, if it's helpful, I think what I heard is everything we've described so far and more, and that's fine. I appreciate the direction. If that's the case, we can certainly implement that informally in the intervening week. We can come back with something more formal by way of a resolution that you could adopt next week to implement everything that we've put on the table so far, and then we can come back with more.
Commissioner Davis, you know, and some services that we are a source of pride, we may have to get on Salina Media Connection and have, you know, group exercising at home on TV. You know, just because we don't have the formal organized sports doesn't mean that our citizens can't be doing healthy work at home. We do have resources that we can use, and it's already paid for, right? So, and we're going to have to be creative. This, you know, Salina baseball's not going to be the only baseball that's missing this year. Summer football's not, in Salina, is not going to be the only football that's missing. This is, I'm fortunate that I didn't have to live through World War II, but, you know, my parents always talk about the clothing rationing lines, the meat rationing lines, and stuff that I'm glad I haven't had to experience, but I think we're going to have to be prepared to be mentally just that tough during this, and I would rather build up as much of a war chest as we can. You know, we have to protect water, fire, police, sewage, trash. Otherwise, you get secondary health and social ills, which will make the virus look like nothing. You know, so if we keep those covered, then I think anything else is on the table.
Commissioner Franz, I want to address that a little bit. I said nothing was off the table, and I meant that. Those functions, we can look at and try to determine if we can handle them in a different way with less. And it's, as far as I'm concerned, nothing's off the table. You know, I, we do have to worry about certain key people being incapacitated by the virus, you know, includes water and wastewater plant operators, includes police, EMTs. That does have to be a concern. But in terms of looking at programs and functions, as far as I'm concerned, anything's on the table.
Commissioner Hodges has raised her hand.
Okay.
You're unmuted, Commissioner Hodges.
Great, thank you very much. First of all, I just wanted to agree, I think that we're all on board on continuing to really take a hard look at going a little bit deeper, but also in terms of the conversation about looking at reducing an employee's hours, there's a program by the Kansas Department of Labor called Care Work Program, and it can typically make an employee's lost income due to a work reduction. For instance, if you had an employee that was going from a 40-hour working day being reduced to 20, or 20% of that is being reduced to eight hours, the employee would work and he would earn wages for 32 hours, and then the Kansas Department of Labor could supplement that other 20%. So I think that that's something that's worth looking into to see if there's not a way that we can make that program work out. And I'm assuming that municipality... if there's not a way that we can make that program work up. And I'm assuming that municipalities can participate in this, but it's called the Shared Work Program, and it's run by the Kansas Department of Labor. And then the other item that I wanted to comment on is as we are looking at, you know, furlough reductions and all of the other things that we really don't want to, to, to have to do, I think that, and Commissioner Franz may have mentioned this, but there's occasional feedback, but I think that we're going to need to be looking at some sort of a sliding scale. Something else I wanted to bring up under other citizens, since we have gone into the realm of, of personnel here, I mean, I have a concern with public work, you know, should, should they be getting some sort of housing? We know that that's a hard position to consider, and I think later, we're going to be looking at further deferring our, on the track system decision. But I just want to recognize that a 5% or 10% wage cut or hour cut is really going to impact some of our employees a lot more than others. And, you know, I would, I would prefer to see a, you know, and I don't, I don't know, I mean, from the conversation, I don't think that we, we have the resources, but I guess we could offer them some kind of hazard pay for the, for the folks working in public work. They're taking a risk of, of continuing to pick up all of our refugees. They're running the risk of taking COVID-19 home to their families. And I just wish that we could find some way to show our appreciation for the work that they're doing at really the lower end of our, our pay scale. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, Commissioner Davis, are there any programs whereby excess city or even county employees can fill in for jobs that federal government has created? I don't know if there's a net increase or decrease in all municipal and government position. As, as an example, the office that handles unemployment benefits, I would think that they're probably understaffed right now, just because they don't usually see this many applications. But, you know, amongst governments, is there a job share list?
Well, we're, I'm not aware of an existing job share list like you've described. We aren't, we, we're aware of the, the Shared Work Program, and we're looking into that. With respect to unemployment, I kind of heard secondhand, I guess, that they've taken non-essential employees at the state level that were sent home and they're backfilling unemployment phone lines with them. But beyond that, I'm not aware of any, other than the Shared Work Program that we need to check into, I'm not aware of anything else.
Mayor Hoppick, and kind of following a little bit about what Commissioner Franz said, and, and again, we made a run at this, and it's kind of what I always say, and as Commissioner Davis said, we're not really picking this apart. I said, I never like to write a letter, but I always like to edit it. It's always easy to do. I was just wondering if we have a feel that we should ask Debbie to go another 30 days out or something at least, to see what kind of result that would have on our, you know, to, to take the, this a little bit further, just to see what our shortfall comes. I mean, I, I'm a little bit like, like I think a couple of the commissioners, I'd like to wish for the best, but let's plan for the worst, and maybe we should take that out a little bit further. And let's just see what kind of impact that has on us.
I would go another 60 rather than 30.
Yeah, Commissioner Franz here, I presume that you, when you say that, you mean is, let's project that this lasts a little longer than we did within this model. And I think, I'm with Commissioner Davis, I think 60 or 90 is probably, that would kind of give us, I think, more of a worst-case scenario.
Let's kind of take that out another 60. And I think, thank Tara, I think she's listening, but for her, by the fact that she's built in this formula, it's going to be a lot easier for us to, to fill those numbers in and to see where we're at. So 60 days, okay with commission?
Sure.
And I just, it gives us another number to look at, to, to see what we really may have to deal with, so.
Debbie Pack, so I know you mentioned kind of your target overall number, and I don't remember if I heard it right. I, I'm hearing 15 to 20% total. So my thought is if we change those predictions so that the total revenue reduction is in that ballpark, then we would have something to, we have kind of a goal of what we need to then look for as far as savings on the other side.
Are you saying there from 8 to 20%?
Well, you know, I, Commissioner Franz, again, I, I'm not sure quite what to tell you on that, because almost anything's a guesstimate, and sales tax is a big deal. But one of the things that bothered me about the Moody's article is, and I know they're good at what they do, but they also have a particular book of business. And, and I just, I got a feeling that they were, you know, a little on the light side. So maybe if you take the Moody's projections and, you know, double the loss that they projected, you know, at least on some of the items, you know, I, I don't know quite how you handle that to say, well, if, if this is what, you know, a 30-day suspension or a 30-day stay-at-home order does, what does a, what does, does another 60 days add? That's going to be, in many cases, I think, a judgment call. But for things like municipal court, you know, that becomes a little easier. You just say, okay, we, instead of having one month of very low revenues, we have three months.
Right.
But for things like the sales tax, that's going to be a little bit more difficult. Although I, you could, you know, you just reduce that percentage for three months instead of, instead of one, maybe.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Mike's Craig, our current forecast, as, you know, we've just walked you through them, kind of have that, that trough for April, and then assume some growth back trying to get to Moody's number at year-end. So I think what we could do is extend that trough for 60, an additional month, and then an additional two months. And, and it's not going to be good, but to your, to the mayor's point, you're on the side of caution, and we'll, and I do want to be clear, our proposed approach was never, let's just wait till June and see what happens.
Right, yeah.
It was, we need to implement expenditure reductions, we need to be prepared. And then, we may know more in June in terms of reserves and, and our projections and have to adjust.
Mayor Hoppick here, and what we may see is, we may not see that steady 90 days, but we may see 30, some recovery, then another 30. So maybe if we go out, you know, that 60 and 90, at least we'll have a feel for what the total impact would be through the end of the year, if we do have that roller coaster ride. And again, we have no idea. We're just all sitting up here guessing at this point. But I'd rather we, maybe we knew what our, and that may not even be worst-case scenario. We don't know. So, but.
No, we can certainly do that.
Yeah. That just gives us some numbers to look at, so.
A little bit of a side note, just became aware this weekend and confirmed today that Vermont in particular seems to be closing non-essential aisles in grocery stores and supercenters that are open. So, and some of the expectation that, well, they'll hold their own, if you limit your shopping choices in a stay-at-home order, that could also have an impact.
Well, Mayor Hoppick here, I know that Walmart and I think even Dylan's have gone to limit the number. And I understood from, one of them went to one-way aisles, to kind of help with, with the social distancing. So, so that was kind of interesting to hear, so.
Commissioner Franz here, I, I am remiss in this, but I want to get on the bandwagon now of recognizing the finance staff for the work they did, because I know full well what doing those spreadsheets is like, and it does take a lot of time and a lot of work. And you think you have it done, you go back and look at it and say, oh, no, that's not right, you know, and you have to fix it. So I appreciate that very much. And it was very helpful.
Yeah.
And I would like to add to Mayor Hoppick's comment, I have a friend, a former professional associate who now lives in Todi, Italy, which is in a region, it is not in the region that was most dramatically affected, but he is a little further south. And he's saying there that only one person in a family can go out at one time, so you can't go grocery shopping with your spouse. And at the stores, they only allow a certain number of people in at one time, and then they close the doors, and everybody else stands outside in a line in which you're six feet from the person in front of you and behind you. And when another person comes out of the store, if you're next in line, you can go in. So it's very much, very much controlled there compared to what we have been doing. So there are varying levels of this that could be implemented.
Mayor Hoppick, we haven't taken public comment. I think I recognize everybody that's called in, but just to be safe, we probably ought to give them an opportunity. So if there's any callers on the line that, that wish to comment, press star nine, please. Okay, there's 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, and none of them press star nine.
Okay. I guess, Mayor Hoppick, I guess I'd ask staff, have we confused you enough or given you enough direction to go? I mean.
Frankly, I'm pretty pleased with the consent, the direction that you've given and the consensus. I, I feel like we have a sense of unified direction, and we're turning things a week at a time pretty quickly, but we'll get on.
And part of the issue is, not only do we not know what's going to happen, but two, we're not 100%, we're not quite understanding exactly how some of the furlough and the unemployment, and, and some of that's going to, going to play into this. So we're still, we're still a little bit blind on some of the, the tools we may have to be able to help the employees.
Right. At the outset, I made the comment that my intention was to be, to be very deliberate, not to get ahead of you and unilaterally make decisions and take actions. So we're very willing and see the value in gathering all this information, bringing it to you, reporting it out, and getting the consensus and taking it forward, especially as it relates to some tough personnel decisions. So I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the commission before we move forward? With that, I don't know if we want to take a break, or, we need to address 5.1. We need to address the structure on.
Oh, yeah, I lost track of time.
Yeah, I know, but we were on a, we said four after, so I think.
And again, we don't, don't have anyone called in, although if you do want to take a break, I'll gather up staff on that item, and we can maybe pick it up.
Okay, let's take, take a break till.
Maybe make a clear announcement that that'll be the next thing taken.
We're going to take a break till 5 o'clock. And at 5 o'clock, we will address a public hearing on item 5.1, which is declaring a certain structure at 5, at 3:20 East Bond. A dangerous structure, so.
And in our leading by example, we mask up when we go outside. Some of us do.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to put the speakerphone on mute while we're on recess, and then we'll return and pick up with item 5.1.
Okay. Thank you.